All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our October 23, Des Moines City Council Meeting. Let's immediately get started and call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to take role of the council, please.
County.
Here.
Bozen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through sixty. These are routine items and will be enacted as one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, the council requests an item to be removed, to be considered separately. There are none, I vote no on item five.
You want those. You want to list those ones on the yellow, or you want me to move it?
Well, we can do it. Item, the consent agenda items three through sixty tonight, four C, four D, and four double D were withdrawn. Their review is incomplete. Four PP and four QQ were withdrawn. Those events that they were scheduled for were canceled. Item six was updated with a roll call. Thirty-three was corrected to allow construction of flex warehouse spaces and to allow use of metal siding, cladding, and roofing materials. Thirty-five was withdrawn by the city manager for further review, and forty-two is updated and a policy added, the regular agenda. Seventy-four was updated with attachment A.
Move approval.
Ask, been moved and seconded, ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
All right, that takes us to item, I believe, sixty-one. This evening, the, of the hearing items, there are nineteen hearings this evening, and we have nine zoning hearing, hearings.
Linda.
Number sixty-four to seventy-two, two vacation hearings, one conveyance hearing, one alcohol license hearing, and one certificate of appropriateness hearing, and one lease hearing, and four public improvement authorization hearings. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are items sixty-four to seventy-two, we will hear from the parties in interest, and those, either the applicant or the people within the two-hundred-and-fifty feet that have been notified by the city in the, in the mail, and sent notices. After all, those parties in interest have commented, we'll open it up for members of the general public. Again, we want to let everybody know, if you are not a party in interest, please don't put your hand up, because it will be considered disruptive, and you will not be allowed, not only to speak on that item, but for the rest of the evening. So, anyone who wishes to speak, please, don't approach the mic before your time, and otherwise, it'll be, compared with the mailing list, and if you're not on it, you'd be considered to be disruptive. For the remainder of the meeting, and will not, we'll ask you to leave the building. After all, the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will then be called for germane comments, and not to exceed one minute per person, to a maximum of seven minutes per hearing, unless the hearing has ended sooner for either no more comments, or like a germane comments. For the alcohol license hearing, the licensee will be given up to five minutes to present its case, and the city will be also be given up to five minutes. And for the certificate of appropriateness hearing, the applicant will be given up to five minutes to present her case. For all the other hearings this evening, any interested party, when they make a germane comment, and not to exceed one minute, to a maximum of five per hearing, and unless the hearing has ended sooner. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearing, the only comments as to the plans, the specifications, the form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate, and the low bidder designation will be considered germane. All their comments will be considered non-germane. So, let's quickly move into it, after giving everybody all the quick rules. Sixty-one, it's on the vacation of air and subsurface rights within Thirteenth Street, Falcon Drive, Mulberry Street, and North-South Alley, right away adjoining thirteen oh one Mulberry Street, and a conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property, and a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to Thirteenth and Mulberry LLC for twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Let's quickly ask, are there any germane comments of the general public who would like to speak on this vacation?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item sixty-one, sixty-one A, and pursuant to rule forty-two A, waive the second and third reading.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
Sixty-two is on the vacation portion of Hart Avenue, right away, in the vicinity of fifteen forty Hart Avenue, and conveyance to Bothinig, Jay, Eka, Monig, and Menich, and Eka Monig for eight hundred dollars is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, let's open up for general comments regarding the vacation of a portion of Hart Avenue.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move sixty-two, sixty-two A, and pursuant to rule forty-two A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item sixty-three is on the conveyance of city-owned property at thirty-one sixteen Lincoln Avenue to Home Opportunities Made Easy Home, Inc., for the redevelopment of housing. Council Communication number twenty-three dash four sixty-seven. Again, let's open it up for germane comments from the general public. Anyone here, please? Again, we'll ask you to make your comment, one minute apiece. Yes, sir?
Sure. Clinton Webster, I'm the Director of Property Development over at Home, Inc., along with Kerry Wardeman, our Executive Director. So, just want to let you all know that appreciate the partnership that we have with the city, appreciate your guys' time, and then, more importantly, appreciate the work that we have with Neighborhood Services. So, work very closely with them. But, happy to answer any questions, or anything that you guys have for us about what we do and why we do it.
Anybody?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for what they do.
Yep, thank you.
They do great work. With that, if there's no...
Any comments from the general public? Seeing none?
I'll move item sixty-three.
Item sixty-four is in a request from Olin Home, who's the owner to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to low-medium density residential, and to rezone nine seventy-two, Twenty-Sixth Street, from N-five Neighborhood District to limited N-five dash two Neighborhood District to allow the reuse of the existing structure for a two-household, a duplex residential use. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, and requires six votes. First, we'll ask, are there any parties in interest who would like to speak? Seeing none, are there any general comments from the public? All right, seeing none on that, council?
I'll move item sixty-four, sixty-four A, and sixty-four B.
Second.
Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item sixty-five, request from Lutheran Services of Iowa, Inc. Dan Dean is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed-use, and to rezone thirty-one twenty-five Cottage Grove Avenue from N-five Neighborhood District to RX-one mixed-use district to allow the expansion of an existing parking lot. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. And first, let's ask again, are there any parties in interest who would like to speak on this? Starting with the applicant. Seeing none, any other parties in interest? Any comment from the general public?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item sixty-five, sixty-five A, and sixty-five B.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Sixty-six, in our request from C.S. Family Properties, LLC, Corey Steiners, the officer to rezone three thousand one Southwest Ninth Street from RX-one mixed-use district to a limited MX-three mixed-use district to allow the use of the existing building for a vehicle detailing shop. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, let's ask, are there any parties in interest, beginning with the applicant, who would like to speak? Are there any other parties in interest who have received notice?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move sixty-six A and B.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, let's quickly ask, are there anybody from the general public who would like to speak? All right, it's been moved and seconded, ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item sixty-seven is our request from Gerardo Perez, who's the owner to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use designation from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed-use, and rezone four fifteen East Euclid Avenue from N-five Neighborhood District to RX-one mixed-use district to bring the existing retail use into conformance with zoning requirements to allow the use of the parking lot for a food truck, a mobile vendor. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, and again, requires all six of us to vote for it. So, first, is the owner and the applicant here who would like to say anything? Any other parties in interest?
He raised his hand.
Okay, come on up.
I just want to say...
Come up to the podium, please, and give us your name and address, and...
Yeah, my name is Gerardo Perez, and I'm just going to say thank you for all you guys' help.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to say...
That's good.
Okay. Any other parties in interest? All right, seeing none?
I, I'm probably going to have some questions for the owner, but I was very surprised when I saw this on the agenda, because I'm not supportive of taking, this is an empty building. It's been empty since, I believe, April. A car has hit it. There's spray-painted signs like reward for whoever turns this person in that hit it. The building is in disrepair, and so, I, I don't think that it's wise for us to change the zoning to have a food truck in the parking lot, and just continue to have this empty building that's sitting there. So, I, I, first of all, I guess I don't understand, can I ask Mr. Perez to come back up? Do you own this building?
Yes.
And is it your food truck?
Would you let him get to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Yes, I own the property.
Okay. What are the plans for the building?
The plans for the building is to have a, continue with retail business, like it used to be, and then just have like the food trailer on the parking lot.
But it's been vacant for six months.
Well, we're trying to get all the merchandise, so we can open the doors at the same time if you guys do the approval. Yeah, but I'm being, putting stuff already, so, so I can have the final notice to open the business, so I can do both together at the same time.
But the neighbors are concerned about the disrepair. There's, it backs up to houses. You're right in a residential neighborhood. And, I mean, I've, I drive by it every day, and it's not been kept up. There's weeds. The neighbors are concerned about all the weeds and junk that ends up on their fence lines, and it just doesn't seem like there's anything that's been done.
Well, yeah, I, I have the proof. We've been doing things repaired on the outside. So, we redone, like, I mean, the parking lot, we cleared the lines, we have all done, and we've been doing...
You took the lines out?
Oh, lines, from the parking spots.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had that repaired, and we've been working on it.
I, I, wouldn't it be possible, and maybe this is a question for city staff, wouldn't it be possible to just do a conditional use permit, to let him have the, the food truck temporarily? My concern is, is we're going to change the zoning, and then that building's going to stay vacant for the next five years, because I haven't seen any improvements since, since it's been vacant, and I think you've been six months not vacant, so I, I'm not sure you can even open up a retail.
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the plan was firstly to start the food truck business, but like, we get like the, from the retail business, like the grandfather, so we decided to continue with the retail business. But, so like, I didn't know when we're going to have the approval or not, so that's why I'm trying to, to do the, both things at the same time.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe you need to take a step back. I, I'm just, I, I just can't, I just can't support this. I just can't support this. And I want you to have a food truck. I mean, if you could do it temporarily, you know, try something different, but if the neighbors, the neighbors, you know, you're 20 feet away from residential houses.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned that that's not the best spot for a food truck that could, if we change the zoning, you can be there forever.
Well, on the past, if I remember, that used to be Tasty Tacos a long time ago, and it's been, and it's been like a commercial for a long time, if I can remember, so...
They had a legal nonconforming, so they were allowed to do that, but they've been gone now for more than six months. Or it might be right at six months. I know you bought the building in May.
Yeah, I think it's not six months yet, but yeah, it's going to be pretty close.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
It's...
Yeah, just waiting to the approval to see if I can open... I can open the business tomorrow, you guys' approval.
The food truck business, but not the business inside because you don't have anything done in there.
Yes, I do.
Have you worked with city staff? Have you had a pre-app meeting for inside?
Well, not like remodel or do changes, so it's going to keep the way it is. So, we're going to keep with the retail business.
So, not a restaurant, a store?
No. And inside is going to be retail business. On the outside, it's the food truck.
Okay. Joe? Just, Councilmember Westergaard, I understand your concern wholeheartedly, but I'm wondering if we can maybe come up with some type of compromise that we can all live with. We want you to be successful, we want you to have a business, but maybe, maybe as we work through this, you know, you meet some of the goals for the neighborhood, the site plan, the building, as you use some of your revenue from your food truck, and we get you on, you know, maybe within six months or a year that you've got to make these improvements that the neighborhood would like to see done.
Yeah, of course. That's the plan, to keep things look good because I know it's going to change the song.
Maybe we can continue this to get that down in writing, to have him make those improvements to the site plan. If Councilmember Westergaard's okay with that, then we can at least get you, get some type of formal agreement that that way you're, you know, that you agree to do these improvements to the site and to the building for the neighbors, but you still get to, you know, you'll get to operate and start operating your food vendor.
Yeah, I'm pretty...
I don't know if she's...
There might be a motion to continue so we could get some of these things in.
Well, we can make a motion or we can... I mean, I can make a motion to deny, but I don't think anybody wants to stop you from doing it. But, when I'm... I can't support, I can't support changing zoning for an empty building when it's in disrepair. And, but you haven't done anything. The weeds and everything are still out there, and the neighbors are saying...
Yeah, I've been there doing the mowing. I don't know what they're saying that, but even there is like stuff from the bus right on the corner, and I've been cleaning there, all the garbage. You know, the community threw it right on the bushes.
But it's still your property and you're responsible for it.
Yep, yeah, but yeah, like I say, I've been over there doing...
So, would you be, would you be open to letting us continue it and then you can work with city staff? Because I need to see something other than a food truck. I have to see something that we're not going to change the zoning so you can put a food truck there and then it just stays that way forever.
I think we've got another one here, and it looks like we've got a gentleman back here that might want to...
He's...
Yeah. Come on up, stand over here.
Manny Trivio, 810 26th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. Some of you guys may know me, also representing Pedro as his commercial real estate agent. So, the process, Ms. Councilmember Westergaard, is we approached this property for a lot of different reasons. It is a commercial and retail component, was operating under Almost Free at the time, working through maybe a transition of the business. We ended up not asking for the retail portion of it. Purchased it, he went to seek his licensing for the commercial food truck, which wasn't allowed based on the zoning. Worked with city staff, did the neighborhood meetings, was approved, I guess I would call it, through flying colors, excuse me, flying colors through P&amp;Z, and with no real understanding of kind of pushing this back now for his livelihood and his business as he's trying to operate. He could have operated the actual business retail component four months ago, three months ago, but he was trying to kind of get everything lined up to kind of do a grand opening with the food truck. As far as I understand, there was no commentary, there was nobody present at our neighborhood meeting that night of Thursday. I can't remember the date off the top of my phone, but excuse me, I had to look at my phone. So, there wasn't any feedback from the neighbors. There was one through Nick Tarpe that responded to him directly, and we connected with that person, and there wasn't any concerns at that point after Mr. Gerardo connected with that neighbor. I do understand that, I think at that time, there was maybe some things with some spray paint that are... Well, in this case, my client, but Gerardo himself had been dealing with painting and taking that graffiti off. He took down all the signage as asked to by the staff as far as on the white fence. I think we're open to working, I mean, I'm just kind of speaking for him, but I think we're open to working with understanding kind of a balance here, but for him, it's definitely kind of at a moment, kind of pivotal for him to kind of start his business, start kind of really bringing in some income for his family. He's invested in a food truck, you know, actually, it's a food trailer, one of the fairly nicer ones, I would call it, you know, and is just kind of waiting to kind of deploy that, has worked with a neighbor around the corner to actually displace it every night as he's supposed to. He's not going to, he's not going to leave it there every night. He's going to move it in and move it out. And so, we're just kind of working to understand. The retail was allowed by grandfathering rights, which he could have opened, but then he was trying to establish that food truck component, which we had to go seek the rezoning, which kind of just pushed everything back to this moment here. But, any questions I could try to answer or...
But I think it has probably lost its...
Well, that, I would beg to differ. I would argue a little bit on that piece because we had worked intensively with, through multiple emails with Mr. Tarpe, and so, I knew that, I knew exactly the timing was going to line up to essentially do the rezoning. And I think we're open to discussing any possible changes at the P&amp;Z meeting, but those weren't brought up at the time.
Honey?
Cody Christensen's come in. Could you explain what is the grandfather in? Is it... Couldn't we go through some of those details if that would be helpful?
Mayor members of council, Cody Christensen, Director of Development Services. So, we've talked about the six-month vacancy here. But once, once a property's been determined to be vacant for six months, then it loses its grandfather rights. This property, prior to our rezoning several years ago, was allowed to continue its use as a retail space. It maintained grandfather rights, it maintained those in its current zoning as well. Right now, it has not lost its grandfather rights, so it hasn't hit that six months of vacancy. What the applicant is pursuing here is a rezoning that would allow a food truck to be established on the site and would also allow other uses to come into the building. In the event that it does remain vacant for six months, then it will have to go through this rezoning process to be reoccupied for retail or office or any sort of commercial use.
But I'm, but is it wise? I still don't like the idea that we're going to change the zoning so we can put a food truck there without any plans for anything else. And you can say, Manny, well, we're going to do this, but it hasn't been done for six months, and I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen any repairs. It's in disrepair.
Councilmember Westergaard, that's a great position, and you know, again, I'm not the business owner. All I can do is speak for him and he can come up and speak for himself, but he has LLCs in place, he has that, you know, to show as proof that he's moving forward. He has updated the inside, he has painted it, he has done flooring in there. Stuff that, I guess, I apologize, we don't have that as reference outside of, you know, providing that through, in this case, Mr. Christensen here, through kind of a formal email. But he has taken those efforts to try to get that place ready for his business, which he's been operating, which he's going to operate as a retail component, like Almost Free, and then at the same time, trying to establish his food truck component as well. So...
And how many... And I know you were in planning zoning for the city for quite some...
That is correct, yep.
How many parking spaces would he need for the store? How would, how would the parking spaces accommodate a food truck?
No, that's a great question, and without understanding the current code and its, and its kind of entirety, I mean, I understand it what it was, but I do also understand that if it was considered nonconforming, that the parking at this point would be established and would allow for that to continue. I would have to ask Mr. Christensen to verify that, to validate that, but I believe the parking that is in place now would allow for him to maintain the nonconforming existing retail component. What we're seeking is a rezoning to establish it to be commercial, which is on Euclid, which is a very commercialized thoroughfare, to allow for continuation, I would call it, of that use across that thoroughfare. Yes, I understand, it does back up to neighborhood, but that, that is consistent amongst many other areas, considering myself where I live, I have a finger saw, that is consistent there as well.
But, but what I'm saying is, if he truly is going to open up this store...
Correct.
You have to have parking spaces for that.
I understand that.
How would, how could you put parking in there? You have to have a certain number of parking spaces. How could you do that if you were going to have a food truck there?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that.
I believe, I believe you have just the right number of parking spaces when they had the store there, when it was the free store.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'd have to defer to Mr. Christensen to answer that.
So...
Yep. Councilmember Westergaard, the proposal that's been brought forward has been looked at by city staff, and it's been determined to be a viable site for both retail use and the, and the food truck.
But together?
Yes.
Together. So, how many parking spaces would he...
I don't have the details on that.
Would he lose? Well, I guess I would propose, if the applicant's okay, is that we continue this, and if he wants to work with city staff, maybe get a pre-app for your store. I mean, even if you open it up as a store, you still have to have, you have to go through the city to make sure that you have everything correct in there.
I have a question, Councilmember Westergaard, if I may, for you. Did you raise any of these concerns with the applicant before this meeting?
I never heard about it. I have repeatedly asked city staff to have applicants get a hold of board councilperson. They tell me that's not their job. The applicant has never reached out to us. You know, I know there was a public meeting, but I don't know how it was advertised. I certainly didn't know about it. The neighbors, I've talked to several neighbors and they haven't known about it, and that's been an issue that we've had repeatedly with not this incident, but other instances.
And Councilmember Westergaard, I just, I would just like to respond to that. We were given our direction by city staff as far as the radius within to send and draft the letter, and provided also the direction for the waiving of the second and third reading. I guess, the biggest thing of this, I, again, an investment's been made by Mr. Gerardo in the sum of, you know, $150,000 plus for the property. He's purchased it outright, and very excited to move forward in that regard as far as...
We're excited to have him in the neighborhood.
And so, I think the biggest thing that we understand, and I've run in this with other business owners, is taking that next step. I believe in everything that Cody's doing and the staff's doing, that that influx of updates that would be needed is pretty substantial. So, I mean, the understanding from our perspective, from Gerardo's perspective, is opening the food truck is one thing, and he may have to step back from that if that's the case, if we're going to be kind of pushing it up against this six-month timeline, because ultimately, I don't think he wants to get in a position where he's going to have to be held to a $200,000-plus type of site improvement, which I'm not saying is not needed, but again, there is kind of this position that he's just trying to create a business, and so that's where we got to the point here. I'm sorry.
This is what I'm going back to, where we need somebody in the small businesses that helps people go through the process. So, if we could have a graduated effort, that you do this, then you do this, then you do this, but get them open so they get business done. It seems like the staff has really looked at everything from a standpoint of parking and, you know, the zoning and things, that if we can get somebody in there to get some revenue coming, then they can...
That was my suggestion.
That you then gradually do the other things you need to do, which is what you're trying to do, right?
Yeah.
I don't see any plans for anything else. I think, I think your plan is just...
The only barrier is us. I mean, if we approve this right now, he could start his business after this is approved, correct? Like, if this rezoning is approved, the business can start operating?
Yeah, this is the, this is the next logical step in the process for him to move forward with what he's proposed.
And I get that, but I think about the neighborhoods that say... Can we have it quiet, please? That the neighborhoods are tired of empty buildings in our neighborhood. We have these empty buildings, and, and nothing has been done with this empty building for six months. And now he wants to do a food truck, which I get, but couldn't we just do a conditional use permit and let him do that until he gets the other store up, and then we're fine to change things?
The reason the rezoning is here is because the rezoning is needed, it's necessary to allow the food truck. So, in order, in order for the food truck to be allowed, this, the property has to be rezoned.
So, he doesn't have to do any other site plan improvements or anything inside? There's no other...
This time.
You're not recommending, or it's not required, once we do this, for him to do any other improvements to the site?
Not at this point for the food truck.
Even with the rezoning, we don't have to, he doesn't have to do anything?
Correct, correct. This is, this is the, staff have heard the desire to allow businesses to open, start generating revenue, and then be able to make improvements. This process, taking the, taking the action of approving the rezoning for this site...
I like that.
This action allows this gentleman to generate some revenue for the site and build up some of that to reinvest in the property.
Make the improvements that we're going to tell them.
But are we going to require any improvements at all over a period of time to the site? I guess it would be my question to you. I mean, I love that we're going to get him open, and I'm all for that, like I said at the beginning, but, you know, we talked about this, this process where, okay, once we get them open, then they need to take some of their revenue and put it back into the property for the neighborhoods. Now, we don't have to do that for this particular site, is what you're telling me.
I'd have to, I'd have to work with staff, get more of the details to take that much of a deep dive here.
Okay.
But just in general, the, the next step is to rezone to allow the, allow the food truck on the site.
But we can rezone and then do a food truck, and he doesn't have to do anything else ever to that building. And that's what concerns me.
We can't force him to occupy the building.
Correct. But we don't have to, if we don't rezone the land...
It's still an empty building, isn't it? Even if we don't really?
Well, it's an empty building, but I want the incentive to be there to get the building.
I mean, he owns the building. He has every incentive to improve it. He can't, if we deny him the opportunity to operate as a business. This is the next step. It's been approved by planning and zoning, it's been recommended by city staff. At this point, our action is the only barrier to him getting open, and that's wrong.
Well, Josh, it's not your neighborhood. It's not your neighborhood. It's my neighborhood, and I know how the neighbors feel...
It's our community.
About other empty buildings. So, okay.
I am trying to get small, I think we, this building has not a lot of opportu... I mean, we have a lot of empty buildings, and if we can give in this neighborhood node a food truck, which there's all up in, you know, there are two or three around, you know, we have the liquor store, you have the get-and-go, an opportunity, he could actually do retail out of it would be...
And that's my point, Tommy.
But I think that we have to give him the opportunity because small businesses, if he has any improvements to that building, we're going to trigger that 50%, and he's going to have to do shrubs, and he's going to, right?
I don't, I don't, I don't object to the food truck. The food truck is fine, but what I'm objecting to is, wouldn't it be better to do a conditional use permit and let him continue on? Because if he has a conditional use permit, it would still be the legal nonconforming. And then we can look at, in the future, he can get this, get a store. I don't know what kind of a store it is. I mean...
Retail, like it used to be, so we're going to have a...
Do you have any plans? I mean, do you have...
Yeah, it's already beautiful on the inside.
Good.
We have racking and everything, we have already merchandised, and, you know, I just cannot open, yeah, because I've been waiting for all this. Yeah, so, yeah, like, let's say, three, three months ago, I was ready to get the business open for the food trailer, for the food truck, and then when I went to Sandy to get the permit, she said the property was on like a residential... and then when I went to Sandy to get the permit, she said the property was on like a residential, and I have to rezoning, and if I have to go through all this, that's why we're here.
Linda, do you want to make a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve items 67 and 67A, but I'm not going to move for the, the waiver until we see additional plans.
And it will come back then the next meeting?
Yeah, the, the plans are already, are already made, so it's going to be open.
Let's see, and, but Cody, doesn't he have to work with you if he's going to open up a business? I mean, you can't just, he can just open it up, put a sign up, and do whatever he wants?
The grandfather rights can remain, correct?
That's, that's kind of where we're at, right, Cody? I guess.
So, so right now, he maintains grandfather rights. He has not lost, it's not been determined to be vacant. So he can move retail business in there tonight if he wants to.
Okay.
Without any improvements to the site or anything?
Correct, correct.
That's where we were.
Yeah.
And, and the, right now, the, the, the action is to rezone, and that rezoning is necessary to allow the food truck.
Tuck the bean.
In its current zoning, the food truck can't, can't be, can't be there.
Gotcha.
Right.
So that's, that's why the rezoning is the next step in the process.
So let me ask the applicant, if we, if we allow you to do this, how soon will you have the store open?
Uh, tomorrow? Yeah.
Okay, good. Good, that's what I wanted to hear.
If you have inventory to put in the store?
Yeah, I have, I already started with inventory, so I can be in business tomorrow.
Then come back in two weeks, and if you've got the store open, we'll.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm buying my, my own supplier, because I have a restaurant on Merle Hay. So I got merchandise over there, so I'm buying my own supplier right now.
Perfect.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, I got, I got drinks, I got, uh, I like, uh, disposables. I got, I got stuff for the community.
Then let's go with 67, 67A. Come back in two weeks and show us what you've got, and then we can waive that third reading. Is that okay?
Okay.
Second thing.
Can I, can we get public?
Yeah. We've already.
We have closed the hearing.
Okay, general public, anybody else?
I just want to say, I'm a small business owner for hearings later. If you don't approve this today, you're pushing it back two months, that can kill a business. There is, it is, if it's not today, he has, you can, you can't waive one hearing. You can only waive all three, is how I understand it. You can waive two, but even if you push it back a month, two weeks, the cash flow is huge. I mean, it's really hard. I've seen it, I'm a small business owner. I look at this guy, and he's up here working to open a business in an empty building.
I agree.
And you're just, what's, there's no reason to wait. He's already got it open, he's got his supplies. I have no interest, I just think that it should be approved. And I think to put another burden on this person trying to take over an abandoned building is the wrong thing.
I already moved the second to the A.
Any other comments?
Is two weeks gonna, is two weeks really going to hold you up that much? To the applicant.
Sorry?
Are you okay with waiting two weeks?
Well, I, I was, I had everything ready to, to go and sign, pay the permit with Sandy, and I was thinking if I get approved tonight, I was thinking to, to go and pay the permit tomorrow, and I started the food trailer on Wednesday. I got, I got everything already set up.
And what are your hours going to be?
I got, I got the hours. I got, uh, it's going to be closing on Tuesdays. It's going to be the same hours on my business do I have right now. Yeah, it's a Michoacan OTAC area on Merle Hay Road. Yeah, if you go to the, to the website, you're going to find the, the schedule over there we open and open hours. So I'm going to use the same schedule. Tuesdays are going to change, that which is Friday and Saturday. We're going to go until midnight those, those days. So that's, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're planning just to take Tuesday off, and we're all six days.
Okay. Okay, let me amend it then, and I'll, I'll move for 67A and B.
A second.
There you go. Six, yes.
All right, get going.
Get going.
We'll stop by.
68.
I'll be your first customer.
On a request from Mirren LLC, Michael Graham is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use designation from business park to community mixed use, and to rezone 1500 East Army Post Road from EX mixed-use district to CX mixed-use district to allow the redevelopment of an existing building and the construction of a future building as an auto body shop. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant. So quickly, are there any parties, first of all, the applicant? Is the applicant here? Come on up if you want to say anything. And then we'll ask any parties in interest, anybody around that would like to come up and make comment? Okay.
I'm Matt Fluton, the architect. This is the owner, Michael Graham. Basically, we just need to rezone this for the use of an auto body shop. It's, it's, there's two tiers, and he's the second tier, being a body shop. And just, he has several other body shops around Des Moines, and without a doubt, they're beautiful body shops. It's, I mean, beautiful buildings, and thanks for, I appreciate you taking the time to review this and the staff's participation in walking us through the process.
I guess the only question, any cars that are destroyed or need work, they're going to be screened correctly?
Correct.
Yeah. It's all the questions I got. I'll be very supportive of it. Thank you for investing on our side of town.
Thank you.
All right, any other parties in interest want to make comment? Any other general public? Any comments on this?
Your Honor, I'll move, I'll move 68A and B.
A second.
Okay, 68A and B have been moved. And six.
Six, yes.
69, under request from Walnut Creek Trails LLC, Scotty Seelix is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from parks and open space within a development control zone to community mixed use within a development control zone, and to rezone 6222 Grand Avenue from RX1 mixed-use district to F flood district to limited MX2 mixed-use district to allow the use of the property as a restaurant with a brewery component. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Again, any parties in interest want to make comment here?
Thanks for your time. Nice to chat with you again. I'm the owner, I'm Scott Seelix. I'm CEO of HiFer Hospitality. We're a local hospitality group here. I own Lua Brewing as well, which you'll see me again on the next agenda item. We opened Either Or at 6222 Grand, large restaurant and patio about a month and a half ago. And we ran into a little snag with state law where we couldn't sell Lua beer there. We also own Lua, and we wanted to sell our own beer there. And what we realized was the only, the only way that we could do that was to get rezoned and have a very small manufacturing component there. The small manufacturing component there is literally storing one barrel of beer in the corner. Never has to be touched, and we just have to satisfy like a very small amount. But the only way that, so to do that, though, we have to have a manufacturing, which used to be allowed in RX1 with a conditional use permit, which you'll find out in the next agenda item. It is no longer allowed. So now we need to switch to MX2, and then you'll see me back here at the next, well, it'll be PNC again, to get a conditional use permit. All this, just to jump through the hurdles to try to sell our own beer. I like to make the joke that I was just in Tokyo at one of the most prestigious beer festivals in the world, and we could sell our beer there, but we can't sell it at the place we invested $5 million to build in Des Moines. So really frustrating, but really hopeful that we can, this is the last hurdle, one of the last hurdles to get there.
Did you say it was a state law, or it's our policy?
Yeah, it's, it's both. It's a state law that we have to have manufacturing there. City ordinance does not allow us to have manufacturing under RX. So it's kind of a juxtaposition. That's where we ran into this issue when I reached out to, to staff, told them what we wanted to do. They said, yeah, that's great, we can work with you. They didn't realize it technically required a manufacturer's license through the state. Once we saw that, and the two organizations started working together, they came back and said, no, you can't do that, you got to get rezoned. We are a portion of our property, not any of the permitted zones are in a flood zone. So the only pushback we had was to not take anything out of the flood zone. We're not taking anything out of the flood zone. If you can see here, we're still subject to Chapter 50, and everything that's in the flood zone remains subject to flood restrictions. So nothing will change. Our operation will not change. We're still going to operate as Either Or, as a restaurant patio.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, anyone else, any other parties in interest? Any other parties want to make comment on this one? All right.
I'm happy to move 69, 69A and 69B. It's a great addition to the community, and this is a pretty random set of issues you're having to, to work through, but glad you're working through it, because, I mean, the business is great. It's a great addition, you're activating that space. I think it's fantastic, so.
Second.
Thank you for investing.
Six, yes.
All right, item number 70. Item 70 is under request from 1525 High Street LLC. Edward Massman is the officer to rezone 1525 High Street from RX1 mixed-use district to MX2 mixed-use district to allow the expansion of an existing brewery and restaurant. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. And the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. First, let's ask if there are any parties in interest who would like to speak on this one? Welcome back.
You're getting good at this.
I was going to say, you're getting planning and zoning commission.
Nice to be up here again, yeah. It says Edward Massman. I'm here on behalf of Lua, the operator. This is a pretty simple one. When we opened Lua, we could open with an RX zone with a conditional use permit to manufacture. Zoning has changed. We are now a legal nonconforming use. We went to potentially expand our cold storage, and they told us you can't do that until you come up to zoning. So we're just trying to come into conformance.
All right, any other parties in interest? In that 250 feet, any other general comments from the public? All right, see you then.
I'll move items 70, 70A and 70B.
Second.
Carl?
Six, yes.
Item 71 is on request from Brew Oil LLC. Rupender Carr is the officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use designation from neighborhood mixed use to community mixed use and to rezone 4140 Park Avenue from RX1 mixed-use district to MX3 mixed-use district to allow the redevelopment of an existing building as a convenience store with liquor sales. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial. Choose one alternative below. A is to deny, or B is to continue the hearing to November 6 and direct city manager and the legal department to prepare necessary legislation to approve. Final ordinance approval on November 6 will require six votes. So let's quickly ask if there are any parties in interest here? I'm Ron Pogie from Hopkins and Heebner, 2700 Grand Avenue. I'm here representing Mr. Singh, who's with me, who's one of the owners of Brew Oil LLC. We're here requesting a change in your plan as well as a change in the zoning. This, up in front of you is a picture of the building that has existed in this condition for an awful long time down on Park. It's at 4140 Park Avenue. Mr. Singh would like to remodel this project into a convenience store. It will not have gas, like you convention, you normally think of a convenience store with fuel. It'll be just a store in the neighborhood. It will specialize with coffee. That's where the brew comes from, it's actually coffee. They brew their own, and they're quite proud of it. They will have coffee and sell beer, wine, and liquor. And so what we're here for is to request a zoning change. Under the current zoning, we can get a conditional use to sell beer and wine, but not a hard liquor. And so we're asked, we're here asking for a change in the zoning to allow us to then get a conditional use to sell beer, wine, and alcohol. Mr., thank you. Mr. Singh's company has numerous stores throughout Iowa, but none. Numerous stores throughout Iowa that are convenience stores. Many of them, most of them have gas, some of them do not. He prides himself on taking old, I'd say dilapidated stores, refurbishing them, turning them into a nice place, a place that is a community-focused, a place where people can stop by and pick up a cup of coffee in the morning. There's, there's going to be a walk, a window here where they can pick up their coffee and go. And they have, this is the first of what he hopes will be many stores here in Des Moines. He has purchased one other that I don't know if it's changed ownership. I think it's just changed ownership now. So this is the start of several of these, which I think are a definite improvement to the, to the neighborhood. They had their neighborhood meeting, three people showed up. They were all much in favor that something was going to be done to this building. As you can see, he, he creates a nice building, it's nice from the outside, and it definitely serves a need in having a convenience store so that people can stop by and pick up the few things they need on their way home. We're seeking a change from RX1 to MX3, which is mixed-use district. This would allow him with a conditional use permit to sell beer, wine, and liquor. The liquor sales, it only works if he has liquor sales, but yet they're going to be less than 40% of the revenue of the, of the store. The, Mr. Singh really sees this as his first opportunity in Des Moines to show what he can do and to, and to improve a neighborhood I saw and bring a business back on the public role. Thank you. Any questions, anybody? All right, any other parties in interest? Any general public comment?
As far as part, I do, do you have one question? As far as you say coffee is part of it, do you have seating for coffee? I know you have a window, but do you have seating also?
I think it's, it doesn't have a much room. It used to be two gas stations, come and go, and one other company running. They all gone fail. So that's why I didn't do, do the gas, because that's what our main is, that's what we do. Also, we do brew, which is, that's what I want. We want to do a fast service.
Okay, that's why I was just curious, if you had any seating planned?
In the front, in the front of the building, in summer, what we're trying to do, we're going to replace all the concrete, and that's also in a plan to put the tables in the front.
So have like a patio setting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's like an independent type. My name's Gordon Hagan. I'm associated with Pinder. I have sister companies, I have my own stores. If you see some of the pictures he had up here, the one that was on the right was worse than this location. And he invested quite a bit of money, and this is Lamar's Iowa. And I've been a part of it since he's been there. And it's considerably different and changed the whole retail on that street now that the other businesses had to catch up with him. He's invested and not just ran these buildings down, took money out. He's invested and not just ran these buildings down, took money out, it's improved the neighborhoods. And this, his stores are, this type of store is going to be much more focused in the coffee. That's what the draw is. But coffee doesn't take business all day long. That's why the wine and liquor and the other food items, that's what makes the store worth having open all day long. It's basically like an independent type Starbucks type thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Seeing no one else, any thoughts, counsel?
So I think this is an appropriate use and a good investment. I think there's support from the neighborhood who wants to see this building filled with space. And so I think the only thing we want to do is make sure that we kind of provide some limits in the zoning to conform with the use that's been proposed so that we have that protection for the neighborhood. So I would move to 71B to continue the hearing to November 6 with the direction to the manager and city legal to prepare the necessary legislation to approve to reflect the limits of what they are asking for with this zoning change.
Happy to second. Mayor County, just one question. I think by moving forward with this item that we also get a sidewalk gap closed that's along 42nd Street. So another good thing that would happen because of this. So they do have great stores out in the state. I've had several reports about that. So I'm pleased to second that.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item 72 is a request from Electro Management Corp. Britt Baker's the officer for review and approval of a second amendment to the city Gateway PUD conceptual plan on two parcels located in the vicinity of 4240 Army Post Road to allow the construction of new warehouse spaces and two parking lots. Again, let's quickly ask, it's like we have an individual.
Paul Clausen, Civil Engineering Consultants, 24863 Urbandale, Iowa, here on behalf of Electro Management Corporation. Like you said, this PUD amendment allows for parking lot expansion in the building of a couple more buildings on the site that were master planned, but not in the current PUD. PMZ recommended approval. We've worked through staff and they recommend approval. We've worked through the site plan with staff and we're almost down to their last few comments. And thank you for your consideration and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything?
I'm happy to move item 72.
Second.
All right. Let's quickly ask if there are any members of the public who'd like to make comment here. All right. Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
Item 73 is on a request from Reva Walters, who's the owner, for an appeal of a conditional approval of a certificate of appropriateness on property located at 685 20th Street for the construction of a fence in the front yard. Choose one alternative below. Counsel Communication number 23-479. A is approval with a condition requiring a setback from the property line, or B, approve without condition requiring the setback from the property line. We'll ask you, is Reva here? Reva?
I don't think, I heard from her counsel and I don't know that they're here. They were hoping to maybe continue again. So I would be happy to move to continue this to our next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue.
Six, yes.
74 is on an assessment of $500 penalty to alcoholic beverage license permit holder for violation of Iowa alcoholic beverage laws. License will be given, licensee will be given up to five minutes to present their case. Licensee here?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 74.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
Item 75 on a lease agreement in the principal amount of not to exceed $225,000 for acquiring certain items of equipment consisting of three motor graders and one wheel loader with a snowplow. Quickly ask, general public, any comments regarding graders and a snowplow?
Seeing none, Your Honor. I'll move item 75.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item 76 on Aurora Avenue Lane modifications from Beaver Avenue to Merle Hay Road. Resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as inroads LLC Joseph J. Manette, CEO, $991,957.60. Counsel Communication number 23-459. A under that is the approval of the contract and the bond. Quickly, we'll ask if there are any germane comments from the general public regarding this project.
Seeing none. I'll move approval of 76 and 76A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item 77 on 1851 Hartford Avenue Grading and Restoration. Resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Wenthold Excavating LLC. Corey Wenthold is the president, $183,491.50. Counsel Communication number 23-460. A is approval of the contract and the bond. And again, we'll ask if anybody has any germane comments regarding this project.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 77, 77A.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
Item 78 on East University Avenue Improvements from East 14th Street to East 17th Court. Resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as OMG Midwest Inc., doing business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving. Kevin Bragg is the president, $1,200,932.38. Counsel Communication number 23-461. A is approval of the contract and the bond. Again, let's open up and see if there's any germane comments from the general public. Seeing none.
Seeing none.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item 79 is on Glendale Cemetery Pond Dredging Improvements. Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as RW Excavating Solutions LLC. Dan E. Wilson is the managing member, $562,785. Counsel Communication number 23-462. A is the approval of the contract and the bond. Again, let's open it up for comments from the general public regarding the Glendale Cemetery Pond Dredging.
Seeing no one, I'll move 79 and 79A.
Second.
79, 79A been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
That completes the hearings. Let's mark it at 6:10. Takes us to ordinances. First consideration, number 80 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Counsel Communication number 23-451. A, parking modifications, Ingersoll Avenue between 14th Street and Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. B, code correction, Walnut Street between 13th Street and 15th Street. C, parking modifications, 18th Street between Grand Avenue and Ingersoll Avenue. D, parking modifications, Southeast 18th Street between East Lacona Avenue and East Meish Avenue. E is parking modifications, Southeast 4th Street between East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and Scott Avenue. F, traffic control change, intersection of 39th Street and Center Street. G, corner clearance parking restrictions, 1, under that, DeWolf Street and East Boulevard. 2, East Grand Avenue and East 23rd Street. 3, Kenyon Avenue and Southwest 14th Street.
Your Honor, I'll move item 80, A through G, G, 1, 2 and 3, pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
81 is amending Chapter 114, Division 2 of the municipal code regarding the duties and member composition of the Transportation Safety Committee. Counsel Communication number 23-452. Any comments, counsel?
Mayor County, just a couple of questions. Appreciate adding a couple members to this committee. Has there been a discussion of how the mobility challenge members of our community will be represented?
I think it's less a question and maybe a notice of an absence. I mean, if you read the.
Yeah.
I mean.
Fair enough.
If I'm reading between the lines, maybe you're suggesting that we need an additional member to be added.
Well, I know sometimes we don't want to get the committee too large, but I just, you know, this, I think in fairness, we should consider that.
Can we make that part of, yeah, bring it back as part of requirement within the makeup of the committee to somebody, because we have different ones that have different criteria.
Right. And based on what other communities are doing, it would seem appropriate that we know that the city manager's office is represented. Did you think someone will always be staffing these meetings, Scott?
Well, so I have asked CMO, staff person, to sit in on the first few meetings, understanding that engineering is obviously there as well, and to see how that goes, if that's needed then beyond the first few meetings.
Sure.
I don't know if there's.
Oh, y'all good? Okay. When I'm coming in here, I don't hear what the questions are. Sorry.
There was just a notion that we could bring back in the future, a representative for mobility, probably an ADA type.
Mobility challenge.
I wonder if one of us put, I mean, one of us could.
Well, that's another.
Wasn't this going through the access advisory board?
That's what I wanted, yeah. Does it?
That's, well, that's what we, that's one thought would be to lean on that board when necessary, or that committee, but.
It's my appointees there in the audience.
To use both committees?
When necessary.
When necessary, if there's an issue that comes up, or can you take somebody from the access committee to sit on this committee because they're already there, they're already appointed.
Well.
To.
I think we have to collaborate together.
Right. Anyway, just saying, they have it all the time.
Yeah. I mean, our mayor, members of the city council, Steve Neighbors, city engineer. So, yeah, I mean, one option would be to refer certain, you know, projects or initiatives to access advisory board. And another option would be is if you actually wanted to add a committee member from that board, you know, the option.
I'm not sure about adding another.
I just want to make sure it's not an afterthought.
Yeah, absolutely. What do you have, comments?
Good evening. John Davis, city traffic engineer. I think a third option would be to have collaborative meetings with the access advisory board or representative when we have a specific meeting that we're only talking about Vision Zero or the Traffic, the Transportation Safety Action Plan by the safety committee. So it wouldn't necessarily be expanding the safety committee to include a member, but to have it, invite that individual or representative from that board to participate as a guest, if you will.
I mean, I guess I would certainly support maybe adding a, I mean, it's an eight-member committee now, adding a ninth.
Well, let's see. It's going to 12, Josh.
It's a 10-member committee right now, going to 12.
Because they're too automatic. So it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Within the makeup of us, if we're appointed, we should be able to get somebody that represents. Add a 12, if you have 12.
Have somebody in mind that I'd look for. I'll suggest it to the mayor.
But I just think you need to make it a criteria that we do have somebody on, or you share or whatever. So maybe come back with.
Is there a reason why you have an even number of members on this?
Yeah, that's what I was, it'd be easier to have, add one more and make it 13.
Did you look into that? I don't know that we.
Most boards have an odd number that you don't have tied votes.
Yes, and yet if we have tied votes and we need to be looking at the policy a little closer, because the desire here is with the safety that we have, quite a bit of consensus on how to approach that.
I understand that, but generally you don't set yourself up to end up in that.
Have deadlock?
Yeah, that's, the history of deadlocks.
Would probably make sense. That is a great point. Then we can add someone that.
Can do it either way.
Represents that. I mean, I think, I think the issues come up often enough. I mean, we had someone come to our public comment, what was it, our last meeting or two meetings ago, talking about audio signalization. I mean, we have issues around access to transit stops. I mean, I think, I think representation is appropriate and I would, I would favor being deliberate about adding representation.
So we.
Have it add an extra person, make it 13, so that there's never a 66.
I don't know if they can actually change that.
So we can bring it back.
We'd have to bring that back with that 13, so you could approve what these changes are. And we could bring back a new position.
Do we want to approve these changes or you just want to do it all at once? Do either way. I would say.
Yeah, it's a timeframe.
If you want to approve the first reading, which is.
There's no rush.
The second reading, we can certainly do that.
That sounds great. I'd like to move that.
Yeah. Carl, you going to make that motion?
I did, yes.
Okay. I'll second it then.
All right. It's been moved and seconded.
Six, yes.
Okay.
No, you guys ought to hang out. There may be some more questions for the answer. All right. We're going to move on to the, our request from our public to speak. Each speaker is going to receive two minutes to speak and we ask that you all watch your own time because at the end of your two minutes, your mic will be turned off and we'll move on to the next person. All speakers must comply with the rules.
move on to the next person. All speakers must comply with the rules and regulations with your names and addresses and to be recognized. And if you don't, you will not be, each of the five speakers this evening, we receive the two minutes, as we just said. So keep your own time, because the clerk will turn off when she says your time. We want to hear from our residents and we encourage our residents to be respectful to others' viewpoints, even if they might be different from your own. Let's go ahead and open it up. And our first speaker this evening is Adam Kellinan.
Hello, Adam Kellinan, Ward 3. I'd like to again reiterate that we need virtual and hybrid meetings. All the public should be allowed to participate. It winds up with Iowa code for all the public to be able to participate in these meetings. Not everyone has the privilege to attend in-person meetings on Mondays at 5:00 PM. We should welcome any change that allows more people to participate in our city government. Also, I want to talk today about something from the Register and other outlets reporting that Bozen and several other council members are all in record claiming that they believe that the city government should not involve itself in state and federal policies and politics. This is a lie based on what I've seen sitting in a lot of these meetings. Just tonight, on the consent agenda, item 44 passed unanimously without discussion to actually spend $85,000 lobbying at the State House, which just does not line up with what was reported in, in the Register, according to council members. City has also taken stances on international issues, recently taken support of Ukraine and Israel. We also pay to send people to DC specifically to lobby the federal government, and we send the mayor and others kind of around the world for various things. I just want to remind everybody on council and everybody watching elsewhere that all politics is local. That's where everything starts. Change starts here. If we aren't willing to stand up for things locally, we're never going to accomplish bigger things. And I think especially Democrats in Iowa who might be listening to this, you have to start something locally. You can't just suddenly hope that the state's going to change its mind. So we need to be fighting here in Des Moines. Thank you.
Jean O'Donnell.
Good evening, Jean O'Donnell, Ward 3. I'm also a member of Iowa CCI Racial Justice Team and DSM Serge. I want to thank those of you that attended the CCI Candidate Forum last week. I am very appreciative of those that are willing to run for public office and serve our community in this way. It's especially great to hear from the next generation of leadership in our city. In particular, I was heartened that these younger leaders are not afraid to acknowledge that public safety is not all about the police. They understand that there are systemic issues that drive crime and violence. And they are willing to say that out loud, that throwing more money at police departments without prioritizing investment in neighborhoods that have been ignored for decades is bad policy and causes real harm to those that are living there. Investing in our people and their well-being has shown to reduce crime. Nevertheless, we need police, especially in a culture with such easy access to lethal weapons. But we also need police to have community oversight and to be accountable. We need to find a balance between protecting our public servants while at the same time working to reduce the significant harm experienced by persons of color in their interactions with police. Calling for accountability is not an attack on the profession or individual officers. In fact, accountability is pro-police because it enhances community safety by generating trust between police and community members. This trust is necessary to solve crimes. We need city leaders who are willing to help their constituents understand that a broader vision of public safety is needed and that it is a good investment for everyone and makes us all safer and causes less harm. Our younger generation of candidates gets this and is willing to say it. Time for us boomers to let them have a chance to lead and to support and mentor them as they grow in their leadership. Thank you.
Gina?
She won't be here. She emailed.
She will not be here. Okay. Tom Rendon.
Good evening. My name is Tom Rendon, and I'm a resident of Ward 1. And as a member, I'm also a member of the Racial Justice Team of Iowa CCI. And for us, equity and justice continue to motivate us to push the leadership of this city, and frankly, any leadership, to bend the moral arc that Dr. King spoke of. And we have been pushing you to do the right thing around racialized policing. We wish you responded with more support and with more alacrity. Six years seems too long to pass six ordinances and way too long to be given half of the seriousness with which they have been regarded. You may make us wait, though, but you're really not making us wait. You are making justice wait. You're making fairness cool its heels in your outer offices while you attend a needs closer at hand. And we think that fully adopting the six-point plan, as we had originally proposed over six years ago, to end racial profiling in Des Moines would substantially enhance community security and sense of safety, which many candidates are running on, I might add, in many of our neighborhoods. The next mayor will be faced with a choice of how to lead our city forward in the best way. That best way must include all six points that the communities ask for, including a citizen review board, not a police advisory council. And it should be guided by comprehensive as well organized data and making marijuana the lowest level offense and ending detaining and arresting people for simple possession. Now, passing these six ordinances would have been easy enough, but in fact, after you pass them, then we have to continue to push. Just to give one example, we pushed for a third-party review. Now, one of the mayoral candidates has said, "I pushed for the third-party review." But in fact, they, we were the one who pushed them to do that. So we're just saying that we're still waiting for this report that we were promised in August.
It's time for our next speaker.
So please get to it.
Sister Rose Marie Smith.
I am Sister Rose Marie Smith, and I would like to thank you for walking this journey for our homeless citizens. That victory journey began in your hiring the homeless policy administrator, Amber Lewis. I have spoken with the city of Des Moines residents at churches, grocery stores, and gas stations. They expressed a growing concern over homeless camps in Des Moines, Iowa. So let's partner together with, with solutions for this growing population in the city of Des Moines. On September 18th, my campaign held a town hall meeting at Central Iowa Shelter Services in the community room. The homeless population expressed their concerns. The homeless citizens and citizens of Des Moines are on a great starting journey. And I hope we will continue that journey. So we will be not only first in the nation in terms of the caucuses, but the first in the nation to end homelessness. And thank you very much.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Do receive all the comments from our public.
Six, yes.
All right. Thank you all for attending this evening. Could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. We sit adjourned. Thank you all.